Oh, good afternoon, everyone. I'm John Martin, pastor at Trinity Church here in Hartford City. And normally Pastor Jeannie is with us from Grace Methodist Church across the street here. But she's at a conference today, so we're going to go on without her. And so if you're watching this later, I hope that you enjoy it and you get something out of it. And for all those who are here, I hope you do too. We are completing our study on the Book of Isaiah, Sandra L. Richter's Epic of Eden series on Isaiah. And so this is our 10th session, and we're doing session 10 today, the end of our study. And so as far as our schedule ahead goes, not next week or even the week after, but on the, I have it written down, I put it over there. On the 12th of June, we'll be starting our second time with The Chosen, and we'll be starting season two. And so that will start on the 12th. I'm gonna shut the door because there are weed whacking outside.
So how long will the series be on that? Do you know?
It's either eight or 10 sessions. So I have down through the 14th of August. But one of those weeks, it will be July 3rd, and we won't meet on July 3rd. And then I think that's an extra day. So if things go as planned, we should finish on the 5th of August, no, the 7th of August.
It's eight weeks?
There are eight weeks, yes. Eight sessions.
Maybe it'd be into September.
So there is a book available, and so if you want to get a book, you'll be welcome to a book. It's called Blessed Are the Chosen This Time. And we all, I hope, recognize those words, having read them somewhere in a Bible, I hope. But the chosen of God, the chosen people of God, which is certainly something that's been in the forefront during our book on Isaiah. And she's going to talk a lot about that in our video today. How the first chosen of God were Adam and his wife Eve. And they failed, and then God had a chosen people, Israel, and they chased after the idol. And if we remember last week, she identified the idol as being all the lump sum of those foreign gods that they would pick up and chase after instead of following the one true God. So anyway, so we'll be finishing up today, and this is session 10, the restoration. And so she'll talk a little bit about it, but the restoration, the restoration of what? Well, the chosen people of God.
They're coming back.
Well, right, the, the, the end of the exile in, at the end of the Book of Isaiah, the end of the exile and the people return. But also the restoration of God's chosen people by the Messiah coming, the one that we would call Jesus. So we'll be talking about that as we go a little bit further. And is there anyone who would like to add anything or say anything before we get going, before we have our opening prayer?
Yes.
Okay.
I wrote it down because I don't want to mess it up too much. And I brought, this is show and tell. The picture, you've seen these around. There's a couple of them. This is 1920. This happens to be grace. And then a little closer to it, if I can, well, you'll kind of notice.
So that's the old church that was torn down in the mid 20, 1920s. And so this is the congregation during that time. Several of them, yes.
And they were at this, what I would call the zenith of their, a safe, comfortable place to be. And they grew, and they needed a place to sit, so they built this sanctuary in 1926, six years later, to accommodate these people, which was the sanctuary, and the balconies were available.
They even had classrooms up there.
But when, when I studied scriptures, I tried to find parallels between what was then and what is now. And the life application, what does it mean to us today in our situation? So very quickly, in Second Chronicles 1:1, Solomon, the son of David, established himself in the kingdom. And the Lord, his God, was with him and made him exceedingly great. And we know he was rich, and he had those 40,000 stables for his war horses and a thousand wives and concubines. And they had their temple for their God, and they had walls, the city, this, they were just doing so very, very well. Then disaster. All was lost. Here come the Babylonians, 70 years of exile.
How many?
Seventy. And now we're at the point where they are rebuilding the temple. Plus some walls. And their Jewish society slash religion. And it was done by a faithful remnant. But it was done. History repeats itself. After World War II, Grace Methodist, another church in town, prospered and grew and built sanctuaries, hence the picture that I brought to show you. And and then, ah, yes, yes, the church was balconies on three sides. Then, as in the past, a tragedy happened, not by an enemy without, but I'm thinking an enemy within, declines has been slow but sure over the years. Was it the fault of the clergy, or the laity, or the leadership, or some combination of the three? I, I, nothing's to be gained by blaming each other at this point, I don't think. It's happened. And I don't know why it happened, but it's happened. The fact is, we're not unlike the remnant of old. We fearfully wring our hands, what can we do? What should we do? What will we do? And my suggestion is that we read this last chapter very carefully. This lady has a gift of wisdom. And I think this is kind of, and I'm so glad that whoever picked this book, because it exceeded my expectations. It's a, she's a, well, at any rate, with that, I'm excited to finish this thing up and take a break and then come back.
Amen. Let's pray. Gracious heavenly Father, we're thankful for the time that you have given us in this Book of Isaiah. We're grateful for the wisdom of the author who prepared this study for us and went into such depth to help us to understand who Isaiah was, who the people he was talking to was. And then in many ways to remind us how similar we are, both culturally and individually, to the people that were existing during Isaiah's time, during the time that the Book of Isaiah covered. That we're really not that different, no matter how much we imagine we are. So Lord, as we complete our study today, I would ask that your Spirit would be upon us, your Spirit would guide us and lead us. And that we would continue to draw closer to you through your Spirit. And we would gain in wisdom, that our eyes would be open, our ears would be open so that we could hear. And so that in all things, we could follow you and come to know you better. Lord, be with us now and always. We pray this in the name of Jesus, a risen Lord and Savior. Amen. All right, so if we were to open our book, and I'm going to give you maybe page 115. And in that first section, she says a word from the author. She reminds us that when the nation of Israel came back from captivity, that they came in three different groups at three different times. And so in some of our reading today, it talks a little bit about those three different groups. And talks a little bit about the difficulty of the trip home. And Ron mentioned building temples. And when they were building temples, when they got back, they had those who had went into exile and returned, not those who were born in captivity and returned, but those who had went into captivity and then came back and saw the temple that was being built, they were greatly disappointed. Because Solomon and all his wealth and all the splendor, the temple was magnificent in every way. And now, now they're coming back in exile, and they have some, I mean, I don't know what was up with Cyrus, because he was very generous when he sent them home and provided them with wealth, but not the kind of wealth that had been lavished on that temple before. So they were a little bit disappointed probably. And in fact, our reading today describes some of them, when they looked upon the temple foundations and realized, wow, the temple used to be, now it's, and so so we got three groups that are coming back. And then the last paragraph on page 115, she says, Isaiah's third and final audience is this remnant of Israel who are courageous enough to take God at his word, leave the comforts of Babylon, and set out on Yahweh's hollow highway in the wilderness that would bring our heroes home. And we've talked about trying to imagine what, what the journey was in captivity, into captivity. But now coming back, they're basically coming back as free people with some wealth. So the journey was probably easier coming back than it was when they were carried into captivity and marched along. But it's still a way. It's still a long walk. And perhaps some of them who had a lot of wealth didn't have to walk, but most of them probably were walking that distance.
And hopefully they had some carts with them to bring some of their belongings.
Yep, and when we look at how many of those things, 4,000 pieces of stuff from the former temple they brought with them. They, I'm sure they must have had some sort of cart to bring some of that stuff. But why did they want to go back? That's really the question. Why? A remnant, I think in our reading, it gives us a number of around 40,000 came back. Why did, it is a lot, but there were probably 2 million or so in captivity by that time. After three or four generations.
Can't imagine somebody capturing that many people to take care of.
Well, a lot of them were born in captivity when they got to Babylon. Don't know how many were carried off. I don't remember. But why did these 40,000 choose to make that trip when they're described as a remnant, a small portion of the Jews who are leaving, living in Babylon? Why did they make the trip?
Go home.
They wanted to go home.
Go home.
And, you know, after 70 years, can't think there were probably too many that were, are still alive from that point. So they must have heard the story. Okay, and that's probably a reasonable about it. Number of people who never saw this place, and it's not even their memory anymore that they went. And part of them were what were always promised about there being a remnant of Israel. They were that remnant, and they believed in their God, and they knew where their God wanted them to be. And they recognized God's hand in Cyrus coming to power. Oh, whoever they were.
I thought that was noble of him.
What? Oh, yeah. And it, you know, the, the previous kingdom had fallen. And so all these people are there, and I think Cyrus was a pretty shrewd person also, because less mouths to take care of perhaps, and so it was probably a good decision. Plus, when they went home, they probably looked upon Cyrus more favorably because he had let them go home. So.
Well, think about leaving family and fortune into Europe and getting on three little ships and bobbing down the waves. And you weren't even sure that you would fall off at the end of the world. Because you're not sure it's round. And they came to America with that dream. And even a lot of them were bondservants. You had five years to work off your ship's fare before you begin to make a living. When you got here.
indentured servitude and all sorts of things.
But I told them they were miserable.
Right. And some of them were fleeing like the people in the Massachusetts colony were fleeing religious persecution. So that's probably part of what was going on with the Jews too, that they knew where they were supposed to practice their faith, and they were supposed to practice their faith in the temple in Jerusalem.
And there's no temple.
What?
And there's no temple.
And there's no temple, so that what's the first thing that they start to do? Is lay the foundations of the temple. With the plan of rebuilding.
And I noticed they, if they're going to build a temple, they have to have certain people to create a community. And one was priests, the Levites, that were looked upon as running the church, and so people had to be there. Of course, people that were builders.
Yeah.
All kinds of people that.
Farmers, yeah. If the society's gonna flourish, you have to have some of, lots of things. So if we go on to page 117, the first paragraphs. Almost all we'll read here, in October 539 B.C., the Persian Emperor Cyrus conquered the city of Babylon, thus bringing an end to the Neo-Babylonian Empire. Babylon's various conquests, excuse me, I missed something. And in 538 B.C., Cyrus issued an edict allowing all of the captives of Babylon's various conquests the chance to go home. Of all those to whom this offer was given, we only know of one story of the populace bold enough to return. That would be the remnant of Israel. And so you can read there where she quotes from Ezra 1, 2, and 2 to 4. And so that's the only story we have of people who actually chose to return. It doesn't mean that there weren't others, but if they did, they weren't noteworthy enough to have been written about, or didn't have enough of an impact in history to, to be pointed out. And then the Israelites, last paragraph on the page, the Israelites who returned to Palestine faced dramatic changes to the community they had once known. Well, yeah, the temple's torn down, the walls of Israel are torn down. There are people that have probably moved back into area or moved into the area while they've been gone. And so it's not just neighbors from other countries. They have people from other countries that are, have taken part of the land. And it sounds a lot like 1948. You know, when the Israelites after World War II, the Jews after World War II, some of them were allowed to return to Jerusalem. And they found in Israel, and they found that, well, there are already people there.
Palestinians.
Yeah. And.
So do you think that's why they, this fight and argue all the time?
Yes.
Yeah, big part of it.
Yeah. I mean, for history, I mean, this, this was, you know, 2,600 years ago, we're talking about here. But, you know, 50 years or 70 years ago, I guess now that would be, it's pretty memorable. And the Jewish people, when they got back after World War II, they weren't in a very forgiving mode. And so there was, there was a lot of things that they did that perhaps would not have been God's ideal choice for the actions that they would take. I mean, drove people out, and if they didn't want to leave, they forced them out. Even worse than that.
So Indians today still don't have a very high regard for white men.
Yeah.
Well, you can understand why.
Yeah.
So, so do you think that right now, as of today, that Israel just wanting more land from the Palestinian?
I think perhaps, but I think that it's not necessarily for more land. It's for more land where there aren't as many other people in it, so that they have a better chance of peace. They're looking for space, I think, where they can have more security.
Doesn't sound too encouraging with all this stuff going on.
No.
Palestinians invading our campuses and trying to sway us their way of thinking.
Well, it, it makes us realize that it's unlikely that we're going to see any sort of lasting peaceful solution.
Do you think we should give a, they should give a portion of the land over there to the Palestinians?
I don't know. Should you give your house back to the Native Americans who used to live on the land? I mean, and should we give Manhattan Island back to the Indians and return the $23 in beats and jewelry that they got for it?
Not likely to.
No charge interest.
If they do an assessment, it might be a little more than 23 dollars.
Right, right.
Of money that they're owed. I, I mean, unfortunately, that doesn't happen very often where there's any equitable way to, to settle the score. And then what about the people whose parents were killed, or, you know, from when they were driven off the land, what sort of reparation do you make for a life? And do you think the people will ever be happy? Because of all these years that they've been exiled from their own property and what can you do to make up for those years?
It sounds like some of them came back to their homes that was not in Jerusalem itself, in the area.
Right. Well, and one of the things they do at starting out is try to build the temple and then try to have security from their neighbors, so they try to build the walls. And so it's, it's an ongoing problem and an ongoing process. And, you know, now they're just have walls further out that they're trying to maintain, have that sense of security. So she goes on to say, in the post-exile community, the most obvious changes were that the Israelites were now known as Jews. And where does that word come from, Jew? Judea. Judea, where did, and where did Judea come from? One or the other came from Judah, whether Judea was from the tribe of Judah, because there are essentially two tribes left that went into exile, and that was the tribe of Judah and Benjamin. So as Jews, and they spoke Aramaic, and they learned Aramaic in captivity in Babylon. And so this is 538, 539 B.C. about then. And what was the home language, the language that Jewish people spoke mostly at home during Christ time? Early Aramaic. And what language do they speak in the Passion of the Christ? Aramaic. So Aramaic was a semi-language, and the Jews are a semi-people talking about a region. But so they spoke Aramaic as opposed to Hebrew. And that's because most of them didn't know Hebrew anymore. You know, they probably weren't allowed to speak Hebrew anywhere outside the house. And so a lot of them no longer knew Hebrew. And if we read more in depth into the history after they returned, we would find out that somewhere they found a copy of the Torah while they were working in Jerusalem, building the walls and rebuilding the temple. And so they reconsecrated themselves to the Torah. It's part of this process they're going through. So Torah-centered synagogue worship had begun to evolve, Torah-centered synagogue worship.
That means reading from the Book of the Torah?
That means reading from the Torah, not in the temple, but in synagogues. Because they were supposed to worship in the temple, but they couldn't worship in the temple in Babylon. So they had started to worship in synagogues, and to this day, they still worship in synagogue.
So synagogue means what? Smaller, smaller building?
Yeah, they, well, I wouldn't say they're all necessarily small. They probably are similar to churches in size. Small congregations have small, and big congregations have huge. Big cities probably synagogues much bigger, but, you know, they.
What was the distinction between synagogue and temple?
Well, the temple, there was only one. The temple was in Jerusalem.
So everybody went to Jerusalem.
Well, everyone who could went to Jerusalem for the High Holidays.
Holy Days.
Holy Days, yeah, not Hall. Which is, right, it is.
They did their sacrifices there, that was.
At the temple. So since the temple was destroyed, they have not made sacrifices.
So it doesn't say anything about going back to that, did it?
Well, no, it doesn't. And as far as we know, they have not, since 580, 78, when the temple was destroyed, that they haven't. And so realistically, they're not necessarily practicing the same sword with the same religious practices as they did when they had the temple. So, all right, and then Torah-centered synagogue worship had begun to evolve, and now stood along the sacrifice-centered religion of the temple. The lack of national boundaries encouraged the development of social boundaries. And so perhaps this is when the idea of social Judaism was growing. Because they've lost many of the ways they practiced their faith before. They're no longer a nation as God's chosen people. And so perhaps this is when they started to become, Judaism started to become less of a religion and more of a nationality. And let's see, more emphasis was laid upon
a new word.
Endogamy.
Yes.
Endogamy, which is marrying Jews only. And you know, it wasn't necessarily before that they were supposed to be marrying non-Jews. I mean, there were long lists of people who were not Jews that they were not supposed to marry. I think if you go to chapter seven, may, maybe starting at verse 6 in Deuteronomy, there's a whole long list of people that they're not supposed to intermarry with, or even as. They're not supposed to intermarry with or even associate with. But here it becomes much more entrenched, because they're trying to build their. Their nation, their group back up. However you say it, and so you don't, I mean, they're lo- already looking at the Samaritans. Their northern neighbors when they get back. Who were carried into captivity in Assyria. And have been the ones who are left that weren't carried into captivity, or the ones who came back. Have been intermarrying with other peoples that have been setting in the uh area, and they don't. They say you are not true Jews.
They look at them with disdain.
There you go, great words, they look at them with disdain. Yeah.
So who looked at who?
Well, the people who had been faithful, who came back from captivity. In this time period that we're talking about, looked on all those who had remained there. Who intermarried with the other people and diluted their blood. The ones who diluted their blood are looked on with disdain by the pure blood bred.
Intermarriage.
Mm-hmm, be like adultery.
Yeah.
Well, not adultery, but worshiping other gods.
Yeah, could could be some of that too, like idolatry, you know.
So since they, we're gonna learn from the mistakes of the past. You know, this intermarrying, that didn't work out well, starting with Solomon. So in a way, they thought this would keep us pure, it will be the true. Jewish religion that God intended to be, so you know, I think they had reasons for what they did.
Especially if uh. Their group did not intermarry in Babylon.
Right.
And they're going to keep that.
Right, that's what they're trying to do is to keep. Cause they consider themselves the ones who were in Babylon, they consider themselves to be pure. Than the ones who were. For whatever reason, either they didn't, the Babylonians didn't think they were worth taking along. Or the ones from the Northern Kingdom that was uh destroyed by. Assyria in seven twenty-two, and there are just some of them left up there, and they probably intermarried.
And if they had worship, it'd be somewhere else than Jerusalem.
Yeah. And even right after Solomon died. And the northern and south kingdoms, when they, when Israel split into the two kingdoms. Jeroboam, the first king of the northern kingdom, established a worship of golden calves. North and south, and so that was the first separation. From a religious standpoint, when the people in the southern kingdom who still worshiped in the temple would have said, oh no. You're not Jews. So, and we're three hundred years or more later than that now.
This endogamy isn't working too well, because Jews and Gentiles fall in love. And we have sunrise, sunset. Poor old man, what are these kids doing to us?
Yeah. Yeah. All right, well, I think uh that's enough of an introduction. And uh we'll watch our video today, the video today is reasonably short. And I'll pass you out your little worksheet. And.
Image.
Hello, everyone.
Oh, you grab a hand.
Amazing book of Isaiah that we've been studying for all of.
Do you have another pen?
We ended our session in the last round with me making the statement that the.
Can everyone hear?
Was to transform the old servant to be what that old servant always been meant to be. And so as we approach this very last study, we are approaching the final solution. And the final solution in the mind of Yahweh, opposed to some of the other historical references. From which that passage might come. We looked at the entire book of Isaiah. We've only begun to plumb its depth, but we have seen for sure. That there is an interchange in this book between the former things and the latter things. Between the former things and the new things that the prophet has come to declare. We have learned and learned with much pain and suffering that the first half of the book is all about judgment. And it's all about Israel as she was, and the servant of Yahweh who had failed. And the servant who had failed to complete his calling or to reach. The expectations of the God who had done the calling in the first place, and we. Closed down the first half of Isaiah in many ways was broken heart. In our last section, we were exploring this critical drama. In the second half of the book, this critical drama that shaped the latter thing. And the drama, as you know well, is the interplay between the idol and the servant. And I had argued to you in our past studies that the idol looked like a hero, Isaiah's audience. But proved to be a villain in the end. And the servant, this incredibly mysterious figure. That even the prophet Isaiah himself was struggling to understand. Even the prophet Isaiah himself didn't know how this second servant fit into the story. That this second servant, that's him, can both claim the identity of the first. To judge the first. And then to date the first, so that that first servant could become, as I stated in the introduction. What they were always intended to be. So we saw the idols, we saw the servants. And now in our last session, we have to talk through the biblical implications of what it means. That Jesus himself came as this second servant in the new covenant. And passed on a new identity to us. So let's review here, we humanity was created as the solemn, the image of God.
So we pause, cause that's the first question in our worksheet today, humanity was created as the solemn. The likeness, the image of God.
In Genesis one twenty-six. We saw that God animated and installed his solemn, his image into that sacred garden. To fulfill that role of being his representation on this planet. But we read the humanity rebelled, refusing their divinely ordained role and winds up expelled from the garden. With broken hearts and broken lives in order to create a broken world.
So our next answer is expelled, so rebelled against. Humanity rebelled against the role of being God's representation on the planet and is expelled from the garden. This first servant has failed.
This first servant Adam has failed. So a second servant of sorts is introduced, and this one is his room. Who chooses, as we have studied, the blindness and the deafness of their idol. In their rebellion and their desire to create God in their own image.
So the next question, the second servant chooses the blindness and deafness of their roles and fails.
Deafness?
Blindness and deafness.
D E F T?
No, deaf, D E A F.
Like deaf can't hear.
Oh, deafness in idle, how you spell that?
D E A F.
D E A.
S S.
Okay.
They started, they wanted a kid like everybody else, and then they wanted to be blind and deaf like everybody else.
Mind of creating a God who cannot be, who cannot act, and who certainly cannot save. And so, of course, Israel and Germans failed as well. But as stated at the end of our very last section, we're gonna need a new Israel, a new servant.
So the next question, we are going to need a new servant.
This plan is going to move forward. In the servant songs that are embedded in the book of Isaiah, we are introduced to this new servant. And of the servant passages, the most compelling and the one that you know best is Isaiah fifty-three, verses one through six. Who has believed our message? And to whom has the arm of Yahweh been revealed? For he grew up before him like a tender shoot and like a root out of parched ground. He has no form or majesty that we should look upon him, nor appearance that we should be attracted to him. He was despised and forsaken of men, a man of sorrows and a queasit with grief. And like one from whom men hide their gaze. He was despised, and we did not esteem him. Compare the messages about that servant with how the Israelites were treating the idol. It is completely heartbreaking. Surely our grief he himself wore, and our sorrow he carries. Yet we are still the scenes is stricken, smitten of God and afflicted. But he was pierced through for our transgressions. He was crushed for our new greed. The chastening for our well-being fell upon him, and the guise he is scourging rear heels. All of us, like sheep have gone astray, each one of us has turned his own way. But Yahweh has caused the iniquity of us all, for all coming. Now back in the late eighth, early seventh century, Isaiah the prophet was recording these words. He does not fully understand them, but he knows that they are critical to the message that Yahweh is giving him. He can see on the edge of the horizon that there's someone coming. But he honestly does not know who he is. And so these words are left in our canon. They're placed in the second half of Isaiah. With all who are reading them, asking the same question, who is this servant? And I can tell you historically, every possible character in the biblical text has been proposed. So it's about, well, maybe it's Moses, or maybe it's the prophet Isaiah himself, or maybe it's an unnamed exilic. Prophet, or maybe it's Zerubbis who led the exiles back from Babylon back into Israel, or maybe, or maybe. But no matter how this one has been identified, no one has been able to find someone. Who could both see Israel fail and Israel rejoice. One who could actually die for a broken Israel and then resurrect them all the same. And so this passage has sat in the book of Isaiah like a trunk. A mystery, a riddle. That it would take the future to actually translate and interpret, and so the future comes. We turn to the New Testament. And the New Testament writers, who in many ways are equally confused with the identity of the Christ. That they are proclaiming. Realize, somewhere in the midst of their translating and their interpreting and their Holy Spirit inspirational moment. That, oh my gosh, this is who Jesus is. And so in Matthew, chapter eight, verse fourteen through seventeen, the gospel writer speaks of Jesus. And he says, he himself took our infirmities, you.
So Jesus is, he himself took our infirmities. Anybody guess what the next one is? Who has?
Here the echo, the intentional echo of Isaiah fifty-three, which we didn't understand. John, chapter twelve, verses thirty-seven through thirty-eight. It says, even after he has performed so many miracles in their presence, they still would not believe in him. Who has believed our message? Do you hear the echo? And to whom has the arm of the Lord been revealed? John and Matthew are realizing that this Christ that they are following, who they thought was going to throw off the Roman Empire. And deliver them once and all politically, from the oppression of an outside state. Has actually come to die.
So the second question, who has believed our message?
Who has believed our message and to whom has the arm of the Lord been revealed? And perhaps my favorite one, in Matthew, chapter eleven, verse two through six. What has happened is that John the Baptist, Jesus' cousin, is already in prison. He's already been identified by her, that it's a political problem, a rebel, someone who's stirring up the rabble. And he's a dead man. And so his disciples are sent to come to Jesus. And the question that they come to ask is, Jesus, are you the one? Or should we be waiting for someone else? And what I hear in that question is a question of desperate men. Desperate men who love, and even more desperate men who knows that his days are numbered. And what they are asking is, Jesus, has John light men anything? Or is he dying for no reason at all? And Jesus turns back to these disciples of John the Baptist, his cousins. And he says, go back and report to John what you hear and see. The blind receive signs, the lame walk. Those who have leper fear cleanse and are deaf here. The dead are raised, and the good news is proclaimed to the poor. Blessed is anyone who doesn't stumble on account of me. You know where those words come from? They come from the fifth servant song, Isaiah sixty-one. The one that scholars aren't sure whether or not it belongs in the corpus, but the New Testament writers are pretty sure it does. When Jesus is doing those, he's speaking in code. He knows that if he turns to these disciples and goes, yes, I'm the one, I'm the one who's going to free Israel. That John and he will be dead by the end of the day. And instead, he speaks words to John that John will recognize. I am the one, I am the second servant.
So Jesus speaking in code so that John will recognize that Jesus is the one, the second servant. That servant that she's been talking about, we find in I, the latter portions of Isaiah, that is Jesus. The one who will redeem all Israel.
I'm the one who's going to redeem Israel. So our New Testament writers are absolutely sure that Jesus is indeed this mysterious servant. Of the second portion of the book of Isaiah. Not only are the gospel writers sure, but our uh epistle writers. Paul and the theologians are gonna pick this up and they're gonna go crazy with it. Colossians, chapter one, verse fifteen, here this passage, he is the image. That in Greek is icona, in Hebrew it's solemn, and of course in Akkadian it's selma, it's.
So, the image, icona or selma, sal- salam of the invisible God. The image, that is who Jesus is, the image of God.
In other words, he is the idol. He is the exact representation of the invisible God, the first born over all creations. Paul declared in this passage that the Jesus that you and I claim is the perfect and ideal solemn. That Yahweh had intended to create in Adam himself. Hebrews one, three, the sun is the radiance of God's glory and the exact representation of his being.
So the next one, Jesus is the exact representation of God's being.
As I said in the last section, human beings, we are the best human finite representation of our God, but Jesus. He is the exact representation of his being. And then Romans eight, twenty-nine, for those whom he foreknew, that's you and me. He predestined for what? For you to be wealthy, healthy, and wise? He predestined that you and I would be conformed to the image, the solemn of his son.
So skipping one, the one to whose image we are being conformed. Jesus is the one to whose image we are being conformed.
In order that he might be the first. In order that he might be the firstborn among many brethren. You see, this second servant is launching a new tribe. And in launching that new tribe, he is the firstborn of many and the firstborn among them. You and I are being made creatures and consumed with the strength. So you see, as he offspringed from the firstborn of many brethren, it's actually the silver gem that was given to Israel and to Adam in the first place. So let's bring the problem. What is the biblical justification for this, for us right here, right now, in our lives? Isaiah is declaring in his servant songs, you are my witnesses, declared Yahweh, and my servants whom I have chosen. You, in order that you may know and believe me and understand that I am me. Before me there was no God form, and there will be none other after me. It is I who have declared and saved and proclaimed, and there is no strange God among you. So you, you are my witnesses, declared Yahweh, and I am God.
All right, so Jesus is the one who repairs the image in us, making us.
I'm lost.
Oh, well, that's the question that we're answering right.
Oh, work, I'm looking at for the first one.
That's the. It says Jesus is, and then there's a bunch of dots.
Oh, speaking of Seiko.
So Jesus is the one who repairs the image in us, making us.
I wanna say birthing, but that's not what she said. Exact.
Okay, so that was second Corinthians five, I was on the wrong. Five seventeen, second Corinthians five seventeen. I mean, Colossians, that's why I can't find Corinthians.
New creation?
New creation.
I had to guess at that one. No, she did say that, yeah.
And then the one to whose image we are being conformed from Romans eight, twenty-nine, we are being conformed. And then the new self into which we are being transformed, that's from Colossians three, nine, and ten. That's where my bookmark was. Colossians three, nine, and ten. So nine, do not lie to one another, seeing that you have put on the old self with its practices and have put on the new self, which is being renewed in knowledge after the image of its creator. So the new self into which we are being transformed. And then the last one comes from this slide. In Christ, we are restored to our God-ordained role as the witnesses of the Almighty. He's gonna talk more about that in the next page, starting right with what's on the screen now.
Isaiah, pull this in here. Chapter one, verse eight, what's going on? But the new church is being birthed. How is it being birthed? It's being birthed in spirit and in fire with the inner filling of the Lord, Holy Spirit, the third person of the Trinity. And what is the declaration? You shall receive power when that Holy Spirit has come upon you. And therefore you shall be my witnesses, both in Jerusalem and Isaiah and Samaria and even to the remotest parts of the earth. Do you see that Isaiah's mission that was given to Israel and Israel blew it? Is being passed on to the new Israel, which of course is the church. Birth of the second Adam, the second servant, the fulfillment of Isaiah fifty-three.
So on the second page there, from Isaiah forty-three, ten, and twelve, you are my witnesses, came right from Isaiah. Those verses. Then in Acts one, eight, again. Jesus says, before he ascends into heaven, says, you shall be my witnesses to Jerusalem, Judea, Samaria, into the very ends of the earth.
What else do we have? In Isaiah forty-nine, six, a servant is told, is it true from the thing that you should be my servant? To raise up the tribes of Jacob and to restore the preserved ones of Israel? I will also make you a light to the nation, so that my salvation may reach to the end of the earth. That was the first one.
So Isaiah forty-nine, six, I will give you as a light to the nations.
Yeah, that was for Israel the first time. Did Israel accomplish this?
Has anybody ever heard that phrase used in the New Testament?
In the New Testament?
Yeah. I am a light.
But not the Old Testament.
Well, just read it from the Old Testament, Isaiah forty-nine, six.
No?
Right here.
And so John picks it up and he says that Jesus said, I am the light of the world. And he who follows me will not walk in darkness, but will have the light of life. So our second servant has taken on the task of the first, but that's, that's not done yet. Because then Jesus turns to us, disciples, and he says, you, you, every one of you, you are the light of the world. Do you see what Isaiah has done? He's actually captured the great man in America, the whole thing. From the Garden of Eden, when Adam was first denied and said, no, thank you. I wanna make the world according to my own design. To the resurrection of Israel, in order that they might be the great witnesses of the Almighty. And they said, no, no, thank you, we'd rather make God than our own given, thank you. To the second servant, his name is Jesus Christ. Who not only takes up the mantle of leadership, but becomes and is and is incarnate itself the actual selma of the Almighty. And then this firstborn of many brethren turns to the church. And he says, okay, guys, you ready? The mission hasn't changed, not one. The mission is the same. And I empower you. I re-birth you, I transform you, you are now the reborn Israel. And you will be the light of the world. You will be my witnesses and you will take this message to the end of the earth. Now folks, as we close down this very last study on this amazing book. And again, we've only begun the following chapter. I am hoping that in the grand scheme of this grand and profound conversation, you are ready to open up this book anywhere. Put your finger in there and know where you stand. Because you understand the big picture and you understand the big plan. Adam blew it, Israel blew it. Jesus did not blow it. And so you know what? Neither can we. He is the image of the invisible God, the firstborn of all creations. For in him all the fullness of being dwells in body and form. And in him you have been made complete. Complete for what purpose? For the purpose that you consider to be. For the purpose that you can be a light in a God's name. For the purpose that you can know and see and live the words of the Almighty. This was Isaiah's translation. This is Jesus' mission. This has to be our mission.
Well, what do you think of our video today? I liked, I jotted down a couple things. At one point, when she was talking about Jesus and how Jesus is the image, she said, he is the idol. Anybody, does that rub anybody kind of the wrong way? Cause when we think about the idol, it's always a derogatory term.
Oh, I got it.
Yeah, they'll like idols.
We worship Jesus.
It's, that, that one kind of jumped out at me. I, I don't think I would use that phrase to describe Jesus, but. And then on the, toward the end, she said, Adam said, I want to make the world as I want it. Sounds like any person throughout history that has been disobedient to God. I want to be in charge, I want things to be as I want them to be. And then on the second page, there's a quote there from Isaiah sixty-six, eight. Who has heard of such a thing? Who has seen such a thing? And I like all these references because all the way through Isaiah, we've been hearing about people who would not hear and people who would not see. They were blind to what God wanted from them, they were deaf. In some cases, God had prevented them from seeing him as he was and seeing the truth because perhaps they were just too far gone. But she says, who, or Isaiah said, who has heard of such a thing, who has seen such a thing? Shall a land be born in one day? Shall a nation be delivered in one moment? Shall a nation, shall a world, shall all of humanity be delivered in one moment? At one moment, when Jesus said it is finished?
Terrifical question that is looking for an answer, yes. Whether I understand it enough.
Right. Well, we would say that all these phrasings about the light of the world, that Jesus is, that yes, the world can be delivered in an instant. Especially when you think about the entire span of time, thirty, thirty-three years or so, it's not a very well created time. Anybody else have any comments or questions from the video?
Well, it says scripture you quoted.
It was Isaiah sixty-six, verse eight. It's on the second page of your.
Oh, okay. Sixty-six. Second page, six, there we go.
Yeah, okay.
You think, no, it takes years to figure this out and accomplish it. No, the answer is yes. It's done and it's finished. And it didn't take real long, you know, thirty-three years is nothing compared to thousands and thousands of years.
I mean, it's nothing compared to just the, you know, seven forty B.C. to about, well, five forty B.C., two hundred years, nothing compared even to that. And anybody think that they do a wonderful, outstanding job as that Jesus called to be the light? His light into the world and to be witness to him in the world? Our job, isn't it? Challenging. And one of the things we talked about, well, why did so few wanna come back from Israel, or excuse me, from Babylon? Cause they knew it was gonna be hard. And they're a lot like us, and sometimes we just don't wanna do the hard thing.
It's a long walk.
It was a long walk, and you had no idea what you were gonna find when you got there.
That's right.
I mean, the unknown. Not really surprising that more didn't wanna go back. I mean, how many people, anybody ever seen an empty seat at church on Sunday morning? Why? Because people just don't wanna put in the effort. And that's a nice ride in an air-conditioned or heated car for most of us.
One thing I think with the people coming back, you know, they wanna come back to their home, but, and they don't know what's gonna, where are they gonna live at?
Right, absolutely. Yeah. I mean, it's like there's a hurricane and you evacuate it and, you know, all you see on TV are pictures of destruction and, you know. And yet you still have to go back, you have to see for yourself. All right, for our first lesson, it was about the return. And from the books of Ezra and Nehemiah. And Ezra provides the account of rebuilding the temple, this is on page one nineteen. While Nehemiah provides the account of rebuilding the city walls. In these narratives, we get a glimpse of what this new community looked like. And she says, as a reminder, there at the bottom of the page, as a reminder of the devastation brought about by Nebuchadnezzar and the Babylonians, read two Kings twenty-five, one through seventeen. And so, you know, they, they had pretty much just completely destroyed, not one stone left sitting on one stone. Same sorts of words that were used to describe Jerusalem after Rome and sixty-eight through seventy-eight. When the, too much trouble for the Romans to keep the Jews in line, so they just destroyed Jerusalem. So we could read Ezra one, one, does anybody have any questions from this first lesson or things that they wanna discuss? Questions that they didn't like? Or questions that they had trouble with the answers? And June was talking a little bit, and she talks about the same sort of thing that on page one twenty, real people, real places, real faith. As we review the amazing story, the return of the people to Israel, I am always struck by the fact that Zerubbabel, Ezra, Nehemiah, and their support staff were people with a wide range of skill sets and vocations. Zerubbabel, a religious leader and a pastor, Ezra was a priest and a scribe. Nehemiah was the cupbearer of the king of Persia. And cupbearer, have we heard that phrase before? Who was another cupbearer? Well, or another story where there was a cupbearer that had a prominent.
Been Daniel? No.
Well, one, there was a cupbearer and another fellow in prison with Joseph.
Okay.
And so the cupbearer might have provided Joseph with a way to talk directly through him to Pharaoh. We don't know that that ever happened because the one who got out of prison, there's no record until later time that, oh yeah, I remember somebody who could interpret dreams. And that's how Joseph got out of prison and came to Pharaoh's attention. And so Zerubbabel, no, not him, Ezra was a priest, no, no, not him. Nehemiah was the cupbearer of the king of Persia. And one day when Nehemiah appeared before the king of Persia, the king looked at him and said, you look sad. And then the king went on and said, but you shouldn't be sad, you're not ill. Why are you, why, why do you walk down in the dumps? And so here's another person, and the whole reason why I'm talking about this is these are all instances when God provides his people with an opportunity to speak to authority. And that authority ends up helping his chosen people. It helped Joseph. It, it helped Nehemiah in this case, well, and they ended up helping their people.
And Esther.
And Esther, yeah, she was in the right place at the right time when she could whisper in the king's ear. Yeah. And so, you know. I mean, you don't have to look too far to say, well, maybe these aren't coincidences. And, you know, why each of these people with all these skills and all these ends? And you know, why each of these people with all these skills and all these ins and. Ins with people in the know? Because. God said, yeah, you're gonna get, you're gonna through. I think it was Jeremiah who quoted the seventy years that they would be in captivity. So when seventy years was up, God had to have a way to get them back. So. And then she says in. That area that's in between the two lines, it's important to realize that only a tiny remnant of the population of the once great nation of Judah. Goes to make the return. And even with their best efforts, the city and temple that they were able to reconstruct. Was only shadows of their former glory. And so it wasn't really until Herod the Great that the temple took on any sort of resemblance. To Solomon's temple. But. Cause he dumped a lot of money into the temple too. Keep the people happy.
So are you saying there was a? Bigger temple built later?
No, I'm saying that the temple was finally finished during Herod the Great's time. Even though they started five hundred and thirty years before that, it was only. Finally completed during Herod the Great's time, just before Jesus, and that's when. It more resembled the second temple, more resembled the first temple of Solomon. That there was finally enough money to finish it more as Solomon's temple was. So a tiny fraction. Our people, our places, our faith. Have you ever thought? Have you ever thought that the building of the kingdom of God is the job of the professionals? Anybody ever run into someone who had that sort of viewpoint? That's a pastor's job. He's supposed to be the evangelist. He's supposed to invite everybody to church. In other words, it's only the hired clergy who can or should be advancing the gospel or equipping the church. And I hope that we. Understand through this study and especially through these last lessons and our last worksheet there. That it wasn't just. Zerubbalah and. Nehemiah and Ezra that were supposed to be the witnesses. It was everybody who was supposed to be the witnesses. And Jesus told his disciples, you're supposed to be the witnesses. And. He told them also that they were supposed to go and make disciples and preaching and teaching and baptizing. In the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit. That it's the goal of everyone. And just like we saw these cupbearers in positions. Menial positions perhaps, but it gave them an ear to something. That allowed something greater to happen that. Everybody has a skill that can be used in some way to further the kingdom. So she talked about, well, an attorney, a businesswoman, a mom. A doctor. A pastor's wife, a contractor, a social worker, a gardener. Or an educator. We can all, as she uses it. Phrases it, we can all invade a fallen world and establish the kingdom in the darkness corner of the world where we happen to be. We can all be that light that's poured into the world. And that's what we're called to be.
So light covers many areas.
Sure hope so.
Take. Opportunity to do that when it comes for you. I'm sure you reminded us that. Even when they. Good job, they built this. Not so great temple with wood for walls. That was kind, I think that was irrelevant really. I think the point was. Everyone that made that trip. Hundred percent, they all were of one mind and one intent. And. If you voted. I mean, you wouldn't make the trip if you didn't believe in what you're doing. And that's. That's key. I think back to nineteen seventy. I don't think there was. Anyone in that church that. Was of a different mind in regarding to building the sanctuary. They had a wood framing. Is part of their plan for a number of years. And. I'm not here to explain how that happened. But essentially, everyone. We're gonna do this. We're gonna mix in seventy six, we're gonna pour in seventy four. Uh, they had a little phrase to go with it. And. And so it happened. I mean, that's, that's, that's what the example was. That's what they did and and they. Survived, they more than survived. And they begin to stink.
And when you think about it. This whole idea of them being carried into bondage. And only a small portion come back, a small portion that's very dedicated and focused on God. I mean, it's, it's a lot more comfortable and palatable to us to see this happen. Than for God to flood the entire world and say just a tiny little bit to start over. I mean. Another time when God is winnowing. The harvest and. The ones who are lightweight and are focused on the mission. Find themselves on a different path, maybe. All right. Anybody read Isaiah fifty five from the amazing love? I hope so. Uh, this is on page one twenty three.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, it wasn't that obvious, but some of them were. Come, listen, seek. Those are commands. You do that. Come all. Listen, seek. What's the question?
Um, I just, yeah, I read, I filled it out.
So. What are the wicked and the unrighteous encouraged to do?
Forsake. Return. To the Lord, yeah.
So it's a call to repent.
That's pretty clear.
Yeah.
He will have mercy. Do no wrong, turn to the Lord and he will have mercy. Well. I don't know where that came from. That's true. I read, give us, he, he, Yahweh will give us an eternal reward. Not the way I would have put it. I'm not into rewards, but 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 he will.
Yeah, so. Let the wicked forsake his way and the unrighteous man his thoughts, let him return to the Lord. And he will have compassion on him. And to our God, for he will abundantly part. Wonder who could be, they could be talking about it. Someone who will abundantly part. Someone who will forgive our sin. If we confess. Our sin and if we repent. So. They were called to return to the Lord. And what do verses ten and eleven say about Yahweh's word in his character?
His promise will not fail.
Promise will not fail. That's it. That's a good phrase. Or as the rain and the snow come down from heaven and do not return there without watering the earth. And making it bear and sprout and furnishing seed to the sower and bread to the eater. All those things. Anybody hungry? Would you say that you're starving to death? We're probably not starving to death. At most, we probably might have been a little bit uncomfortable because we were hungry even at our worst. But. This is a slide promising these verses, promise and abundance. That God will provide, that Yahweh Jireh, that God will provide. And will continue to provide. So will my word be with which goes forth from my mouth. Okay, I got it. So will my word be which goes forth from my mouth. It will not return to me empty. Without accomplishing what I desire. And without succeeding in the matter for which I said it. So sometimes we say that God's word will not return void. God's word will affect change in the world. So who is it that's supposed to uh carry God's word into the world?
All of us.
All of us.
Now for him to do that, there are certain conditions. We had to turn. Away from your wickedness.
Yep. So those previous verses in eight nine were supposed to turn from our wickedness. Repent of our sin and turn toward Jesus. As Paul says, confess with our mouth that Jesus Christ is Lord. And all the things that go along with that confession. Turn from our wickedness. Be contrite. Confessing our sin.
Turn to the living God.
Turn to the living God. That's. Good phrase too. And verses twelve and thirteen, who or what is rejoicing at the work of the second servant?
I wrote down those who love the Lord.
Okay. I wrote down Israel and the children of God. And. Let's see, what was that twelve? Twelve and thirteen, for who will go out with joy and be led forth with peace? The mountains and the hills will break forth into shouts of joy before you. And all the trees of the field will clap their hands. And I'll go the wrong direction in advancing the slide. Instead of the thorn bush, the cypress will come up and instead of the nettle, the myrtle will come up. And it will be a memorial to the Lord for an everlasting sign which shall not be cut off. That we will not be cut off, an everlasting sign.
Sounds like a promise.
Yep. All right, I think the last thing we'll talk about is. Toward the bottom of uh. Page one twenty four under our people, our places, our faith. Have you ever heard someone say? You don't know what I've done. God could never forgive me. Or perhaps Jesus could never love me. I don't know if any of you have ever said those words. But what would you say to a person that said that to you?
Try him and see.
Okay. Put him to the test.
Yeah.
Okay, so try him and see. Sometimes you may have to start. Small. And point out good things that are happened, that have happened in their life too. And when maybe try to convince the people that. The source of that goodness might not have been themselves, but might have been something or someone else. Listen instead to these words. Seek God while he's here to be found. Pray to him while he's close at hand. Let the wicked abandon their way of life. And the evil their way of thinking. Let them come back to God who is merciful. Come back to our God who is lavish with forgiveness. So those are pretty good words from the message. Of what you could say also. Then there's a hymn down there and I think maybe we'll pray and then if you like, we can listen to the hymn. And close while listening to the hymn. Would anyone like to lead us in? In a prayer to close not only this session, but our. Entire study of the book of Isaiah. Anybody have a comment about that they'd like to make about the study, whether you enjoyed it? Whether you were challenged by it, whether you enjoyed it and were challenged by it?
I was challenged by reading all the scriptures. And I really dug into it where I probably wouldn't. So. Yes.
So was that?
A reason my piece.
Was that enjoyable to you?
Yes, I learned a lot.
Good. This June, you have anything to say?
Well, it's like taking a college course. You really had to dig into it and then maybe go over it again to fully understand it.
Absolutely, I. And things that I thought I knew, I found out that what I knew was not necessarily correct. So it was a good opportunity to straighten out some things in my mind and come to a better understanding. Then. If I hadn't done it, so. I really appreciate it.
And she's a good teacher.
Oh, yeah. And you know, we talked using the phrase that some people call Isaiah the fifth gospel. And you could almost have a better understanding of that. Be in. You know, because it starts out about proving the fallen state of Israel, but also the fallen state of the world. And the need for. Salvation that's beyond ourselves because we can't save ourselves. We need something of more power that can save us. That can pay the penalty for our sin. And so I thought, I think. She said something about Isaiah, starting with Adam. And finishing with the Savior of the world, Jesus. And. I think that's a pretty good way to look at Isaiah. The Isaiah is the promise to a broken world. The person that Isaiah ends up talking about is the promise to a broken world, the promise of the Savior who would come.
So I knew that. Now I know why that.
There you go, yeah.
Because some people. Almost leave the idea, well, the only thing I really need is Jesus, my red letter of life. If I knew what Jesus said. I mean, that Old Testament, it's too hard to understand anyway. It's just a kind of excuse. I don't, I really don't need to know all of that. And yet, when you read it. With a little help. It just makes. You know, it was true after all. The Old Testament does have something worth reading. Something to say.
We know so much more than we knew before, even though we knew it before. We just know more about.
And people like to separate the old from the new, but a lot of the new is. Has come from the old. It's trying to unsettle you, though. There might be something in Habakkuk I ought to be reading.
Yes, there should, there probably is. There's something in a lot of the Old Testament that we should probably be reading.
And to me, prophecy is amazing thing. And they wrote it down. And happened many years before it came to pass.
Right, many years past, yeah.
You know, so that's amazing and somebody. Wrote it down. Maybe they didn't write it down in Jewish era. They told the story.
All right, well, let's have a closing prayer and then we'll uh. Listen to a song if you like and be on our way. So gracious Lord, we thank you for your word. And for the promise that is in your word. And yes, Lord, thank you for opening our eyes again. And yes, Lord, thank you for opening our eyes again to where so much of the source of the New Testament comes from and the teaching of Isaiah and elsewhere in the Old Testament. That we can learn things that we thought we knew, but now we know what we know. And Lord, we're grateful once again that you have opened our eyes, you've opened our ears and help us to see and hear, see and hear the promise that we all have, not in ourselves, not in the hopes of this fallen world, but in the hope that we have in your son, Jesus the Christ. So we pray once again that you will continue to walk with us through your spirit and that you will continue to guide and direct us in all things, we pray this in Jesus' name, amen.
And John Wester looks inspires, reads the words to this hymn, who wrote it?
Listen. One twenty-five.